I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Menchville High School, Raquel Mandoro and Christopher Ware. Raquel will come forward and deliver the invocation, followed by Christopher, who will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Raquel, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started?
My name is Raquel Mandoro, a first-year cadet in the Air Force Year 2C program at Menchville High School. The poem I'm about to read is written by an American serving in the Royal Canadian Air Force Pilot Officer John Gillis B. McGee Jr. He was born in Shanghai, China in 1922, instead of missionary pilots. This poem, titled "High Flight," describes McGee's exhilaration and freedom while flying. I hope as I read this poem that you'll be inspired and encouraged. "Oh, I have slipped the surly bonds of earth and danced skies on laughter's silvered wings. Somewhere I've climbed, enjoying the tumbling mirth of sun-split clouds. And then a hundred things you have not dreamed of sealed in sword and swung high in sunlit silence. Hovering there, I've chased a shouting wind along and flung my eager craft through footless halls of air. Up, up, long delirious burning blue, I've topped the windswept heights with easy grace, where never lark or even eagle flew. And while with silent lifting mind I've trod, the high, untrespassing clarity of space, put out my hand and touched the face of God. Thank you."
Thank you, thank you. Christopher, would you please come forward? And before you can, tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Christopher Ware. I am one of the varsity captains for our cross-country team. I have my Eagle Scout and I am a Cadet Master Sergeant, er, Cadet Senior Master Sergeant in our ROTC program. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you both for supporting us today, and I think we should give them another round of applause. So this is, this is the home of the military, largest military area in the world, I believe. And you're in that Air Force, huh? That's, uh, we call that the white collar of military. Again, supporting Raquel and Christopher tonight, all their family members and their school family. If they're here, please stand and be recognized. The board appreciates the encouragement you have given these two young students. I know they are going to go a long way, and again, thank you for being here this evening. So at this time, we are going to move our agenda to, I believe, board recognitions. Is that correct? Dr. Parker, join me in front.
This month, we are recognizing two outstanding dedicated members of the Newport News Public Schools' family. Our first honoree, we're proud to say, has received statewide recognition. The Virginia Art Association, or the Virginia Art Education Association, supports, promotes, and advances visual arts education. Each year, the association recognizes exemplary art educators. We are proud to share that our visual and performing arts supervisor, Pat Franklin, earned recognition this year. Ms. Franklin was awarded the Virginia Art Educator of the Year by the Virginia Art Education Association, and she was also inducted into the VAEA Distinguished Fellows, an honored group of members who have performed extraordinary service to art education. Ms. Franklin, would you please come forward? The visual arts program in Newport News Public Schools begins in elementary school. Our art curriculum offers a comprehensive sequential educational program that is designed to develop and nurture creative thinking skills. Under Ms. Franklin's leadership, a district-wide arts festival was established, and the popular Summer Institute of the Arts was expanded. She has raised the quality of art education through curriculum changes and support for her teachers. She works cooperatively with her counterparts in the region and across the state to advance quality art education through curriculum planning, staff development, and idea and strategy sharing. During her decorated career, Ms. Franklin has served the field of art educationally locally, statewide, nationally, and internationally. She served on the National Arts Education Association Committee to review art teacher preparation standards, and she served on the committee to revise the Virginia Visual Arts Standards of Learning. At the state level, she served two terms as the association president, and she served as the president-elect, president, and past president of the National Association, where she led a variety of national initiatives. Her knowledge, inclusive leadership, and vision have been a great benefit to our students. Ms. Franklin has served our students and staff well since joining the school division in 2002. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
Thank you.
We have the honor of recognizing Shelley Simons for her dedicated service to the Newport News School Board. Ms. Simons, would you please come forward? Ms. Simons, in honor of your distinguished service, the school board is presenting you a couple of small tokens of appreciation and in recognition of your service.
And you should always get your roses while you're alive. Chairman, we're gonna have you give her that with that? Oh, thank you guys. Those are beautiful. I appreciate it so much. Oh, my gosh. Well, can I take a point of personal privilege? I learned that in the General Assembly already. And just say, thank you so much. I have really enjoyed serving on this board, and more than anything, it's about the people, and it's about the innovative attitude that we all have, and the purpose that we all share working together for opportunities for children. And sometimes it's tough because, you know, the adults in the room have their own, you know, agendas, but, but we have to stay focused on the children and what's best for students in our schools, and I've just really enjoyed working with every single one of you, and I will, I've already RSVP'd for all of the banquets in the spring, so I will. For sure, so thank you so much.
Now, I'm gonna take a point of privilege and share a little bit here. Ms. Simons has served the students and staff of Newport News Public Schools for over seven years. She was first elected to the school board in May of 2012, and she was re-elected to serve in 2016. She's participated in over 200 hours of in-service training on school board policy, personnel management, school law, and legislation through Virginia School Boards Association, earning top recognition every year. She's served on several school board committees during her tenure, including, I'm gonna take you down this path now, the Budget Committee, the Capital Improvement Committee, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, Employee Benefits Committee, the Special Education Advisory Committee, and she's served at the School Board Association Delegate for multiple years, and the New Horizons Regional Education Board, where she served as president. She's a former teacher and a former PTA president, and she's a strong supporter of STEM education and nutrition programs for all students. In fact, she was an early advocate for the community eligibility provision of the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, and we know that she's especially proud of our innovation in this area. Newport News Public Schools is the largest school district in Virginia to serve free breakfast and free lunch to all students. Ms. Simons, during your tenure, we've earned several national awards, but on behalf of the entire Newport News Public Schools' family, we thank you for your dedicated service, and we know you'll continue to serve as an advocate for all of us, as she's been elected to the Virginia House of Delegates to represent the 94th District. So we wish you well in all your endeavors. All right, this concludes this month's recognitions. We will take a short recess, and during this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
Students at Menchville High School are leading the charge to help feed our community this holiday season. For the sixth year, Menchville students organized and collected non-perishable food items during their Thanksgiving food drive to donate to the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. Through Lead for Change, the leadership program that promotes student-led community service, Menchville's Fair Share Team collected boxes of donated food from each homeroom. After counting and organizing the donations, the students helped the food bank load the food for delivery to the 23rd Annual Mayflower Marathon Food Drive. Students from Menchville's National Honor Society helped unload and weigh the generous donation, which amounted to 1,610 pounds. The Virginia Peninsula Food Bank will turn this one donation into 1,342 meals for families in Hampton Roads this holiday season.
Every day, technology plays an important role in Newport News Public Schools to prepare digital-age learners at all grade levels to be college, career, and citizen-ready. Every classroom has a smartboard that teachers use to create empowering learning experiences. Teachers collaborate with students using the interactive and customizable board to make their thinking visible as they solve equations, analyze data, and learn together. Elementary classrooms are equipped with 12 mobile devices, along with desktop computers, document cameras, and robots for coding. Students build their literacy skills by selecting a book of their choice online with Epic, reading along with the world's best storytellers through Storyline Online, or becoming an author themselves using Book Creator. Coding with a range of robots allows students to collaborate and build essential critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Teachers masterfully integrate digital tools into every content area as students take their first steps into a larger world. Students in middle schools start their day with a do-now activity. A posted code on the smartboard allows students to join their classroom's interactive lesson on their mobile device. Educators use Flipgrid, NearPod, or Adobe Spark to create customized lessons in all content areas. Google Classroom offers an interactive portal where students access lesson content, turn in assignments, and collaborate with classmates on group projects. Computer labs and mobile laptop carts ensure more students have access to digital learning tools throughout each school. Students are even encouraged to bring their own device to join the NMPS Bring Your Own Device Wireless Network. And learning moves beyond the classroom walls when interactive science lessons and virtual field trips immerse students in a world of learning. In each high school, students have access to stimulating lesson content and technology-rich learning spaces. Teachers offer virtual lessons in math and science with FETT interactive simulations. They also create inspired learning experiences and fuel collaboration using Desire to Learn, and quickly assess student progress through gamification resources such as Kahoot. Three NMPS high schools provide every student with a Chromebook to take home, so learning can extend beyond the physical classroom while encouraging lifelong learning habits. Using cutting-edge and relevant technology while becoming responsible and productive digital citizens, our students are equipped with the skills and knowledge to succeed in the 21st century.
Four talented bands came together to showcase their talent, energy, and musical skill. The Newport News Band Showcase was organized by the band directors from Lee Hall Elementary and Demby, Heritage, and Warwick High Schools to offer an evening of harmonious excellence. 300 families, friends, and school staff packed into Warwick High's gymnasium as the Demby Marching Patriots, Heritage Marching Storm, and Warwick's Marching Raiders put on an impressive display of musical force. Each band took turns performing a range of selections, while individual elements such as flags, dancers, and drumlines were given a chance to shine. Lee Hall Elementary's Crimson Thunder Drum Line gave the high school bands a quick breather while showcasing musical skills far beyond their young age. Four collegiate programs were invited so upperclassmen and families could browse their offerings. The event also served as a fundraiser, supporting the growth of all four musical programs. After a successful marching season, the Band Showcase was a fun venue for students to share their collective musical talents. STEM careers are some of the most fascinating and rewarding occupations available. Every year, the demand for highly skilled employees grows substantially. And even though women are currently underrepresented in STEM careers, the learning opportunities for young ladies continues to grow in Newport News Public Schools. To help celebrate International Day of the Girl, Heritage High School hosted a free girl-powered workshop for interested ladies in 4th through 8th grades. Members of Heritage's robotics team, Cat Five Cyber Canes, developed fun and engaging activities for the students to gain experience and knowledge about different careers in STEM fields. The high school students assisted the elementary and middle-school age ladies with coding, 3D printing, electronics, and mechanical engineering. They were able to take home some of their creations, but more importantly, they left the girl-powered workshop with a deeper understanding of STEM careers and the passion to pursue their dreams.
Welcome back, and hope you enjoyed the School Board Spotlight. During our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back with you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute limit. As you begin your comments, a green light comes on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, a red light and a beep indicates that your time is up. And at that time, we ask that you would bring your comments to a close. So, we're gonna have, let me explain this a little bit. We're gonna have, there's always two public comments, one right now and then one at the end. The one at the end of the meeting, latter part of the meeting, will be solely for those who are supporting or want to comment on one of those applicants that are applying for the candidate-elect Ms. Simons seat. So at this present time, we would take all the other cards that are not pertaining to the applica, the application in the selection process. So if that said, we do have a few cards, and one we have first, Ms. Pam Hall, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Pam Hall, and I live in the Southeast Community. I'm here to plead with you to continue to keep the Huntington Middle School students at Heritage. We know it's not ideal, but out of sight, out of mind, and to keep them there will hopefully expedite the funding. And there also seems to be an assumption, I'm not sure if it's true or not, that the city council did fund the design for the school, and the money was allocated and appropriated to you guys, but it's my understanding that it was not. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janie Bazemore, one of my favorite folks.
Good evening. First of all, I want to wish all of you some very happy holidays. I implore you to get your much-needed rest, because we'll be going full force come January on Huntington Middle School. I also want to say that we must continue Huntington Middle School and not just on paper. We request that you act upon returning the 6th graders to Huntington in the fall. Overcrowdiness demands it. The court-ordered busing plan demands it. Justice demands it, and we, the citizens, demand it. Huntington Middle School shall rise again, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Thank you. Mr. James Lovett.
Good evening. Newport News School Board Superintendent Dr. Parker, Chairman Hunter, and other school board members, my name is James Lovett. I'm resident of Southeast District of Newport News. I would like to speak to you all about a suggestion that I have to reduce crime in the Southeast District. But before I go any further, I would like to give you all some background information that happened in the mid-'60s and '70s in that area of Newport News when I was 13 years old. The elementary school formerly known as Magruder Elementary allowed their gym to be used as a recreational center for the young children and young teens in the community, which is under jurisdiction of the Newport News Parks and Recreation Department, and supervised by Mr. Rip Collins. The Magruder Recreation Center was supervised at the time during the mid-'60s and '70s by two great, outstanding, and professional young men. Those two young men were Mr. Donald Futrell and Mr. Calvin Gilmore Thomas. They were both outstanding role models for the community, as they told us and showed us how to stay out of trouble and be respectful to adults and to others and ourselves. I can truly say that most of us young people in the Chestnut Avenue Magruder Recreation Center area had turned out to be very respectful and progressive citizens. I would like to make a suggestion or proposal to help decrease crime in the Southeast District by requesting that the city council and the Newport News School Board meet so they can help create jobs in the Southeast District. Some jobs may be created by using the gyms at the following schools, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM on Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. Discovery STEM Academy, Achieve a Dream Elementary, Newsome Park Elementary, and Pukathee Middle School. If the gyms could be utilized during those times which is mentioned, it would keep a lot of young people from getting in trouble, shooting each other, killing people, and reduce crime in other areas. Also, it would allow some jobs to be created, and that means more taxes being collected and more productive and progressive citizens. Many of those young teenagers are crying out for help. I know one's role model are supposed to be their fathers and mothers, but there are also other role model, people in the community that are role models. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional cards? Are there any additional cards? Are there any additional cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to item number three, our Consent Agenda. Item number 3.01, minutes from our regular meeting, November 19th, 2019. 3.02 minutes, work session meeting, 20, November 19th, 2019. 3.03, financial reports, revenue and expense reports, November 2019. Childhood nutrition reports, November 2019. 3.02, personnel report, and 3.05, our budget transfer. There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the consent agenda. Second.
You heard the motion and heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ealy?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. At this time, there was a personnel item on the consent agenda, item number 3.04. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Parker. There was an appointment at that time.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, our education foundation is rapidly moving forward and aspiring to greater, greater, and things and a broader mission to support Newport News Public Schools. One of those items to accomplish those aspirations was to hire a director, an assigned director for the Newport News Education Foundation. We initially worked with the education foundation to partner with them to make this position available and possible for the future growth of our foundation. And tonight, we are very pleased, after a lengthy application and interview process, to bring forward our new director of the Newport News Education Foundation, Mr. Randall Gilliland. And Randall, would you stand, please? And I'll read a little bit of information about this gentleman. There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the consent agenda.
You heard the motion and heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. At this time, there was a personnel item on the consent agenda, item number three point oh four. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Parker. There was an appointment at that time.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, our Education Foundation is rapidly moving forward and aspiring to greater, greater things and a broader mission to support Newport News Public Schools. One of those items to accomplish those aspirations was to hire a director, an assigned director for the Newport News Education Foundation. We initially worked with the Education Foundation to partner with them to make this position available and possible for the future growth of our foundation. And tonight, we are very pleased, after a lengthy application and interview process, to bring forward our new director of the Newport News Education Foundation, Mr. Randall Gilliland. And Randall, would you stand, please? And I'll read a little bit of information about this gentleman for you. Mr. Gilliland brings a wealth of management and fundraising experience to the foundation and Newport News Public Schools, having served as president of the Support Teachers Foundation, a consultant for MedServe, a nonprofit medical service, founder and managing member of Sustainable Impact, a political nonprofit consulting firm, and founder and president of Gilliland Inc. a national political fundraising firm. Mr. Gilliland has also served on the Hampton City Council, eight years of service from two thousand and two to two thousand and eight, ten, I think, two thousand and two to two thousand and eight, I'm doing my math, including two years as vice mayor. He has extensive service to the community, having led and served on numerous boards, commissions, and organizations. We are extremely proud to bring Mr. Gilliland to Newport News in the capacity of serving our Education Foundation, and we know and look forward to your leadership in broadening the mission of that foundation. Let's give him a round of applause. And I think Mr. Gilliland mentioned he's not accompanied by family members tonight, but I would love to have an opportunity at some point for the board to get to meet you as well, sir. Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Soon as possible. Thank you. And that concludes the personnel items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Our next items, number four, action items. Four point oh one, the proposed fiscal year twenty legislative programs. That was presented to us at the last board meeting. If we could get a motion for approval.
So moved.
You heard the motion?
Second.
You heard the second. Now time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Ms. Simons?
Heck yeah.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
And item number two, four point oh two, our new course proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Can I get the motion for approval of that?
So moved.
You heard the motion in the second?
Second.
You heard the motion in the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Last time, Ms. Simons. Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Well, we're moving pretty fast. Item number five, reports and information. Yes, we'll have our first presentation of our new revised policies. Ms. Tracy Brooks, Special Assistant to the Superintendent, will do the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share with you fourteen new and revised policies and procedures that have been reviewed by our Policy Review Committee. As you know, one of the major roles of the school board is to set the policy direction for the school division, so we're very fortunate to have Mrs. Searls Law and Mr. Ely serving on the committee, along with the principal from each level and academic services administrator, our two attorneys, a teacher, and myself as the policy administrator. So during our policy review process, the department leads or our senior staff members present their new and revised policies and procedures to the committee. After our discussion and review, we hold a public comment period and incorporate any input that we receive during that time, and so those policies are now before you, which is step eight of our policy review process. So this evening, I will be sharing our new and revised policies and procedures with you in three groups. The first are those that are required as a result of general assembly legislation. Second are the policies and procedures that are being revised to reflect practices that are currently in place in the school division. And third is a policy revision recommended by the Virginia School Boards Association to align our policy with the state code. Now, the first four policies and procedures resulting from recent General Assembly Legislation Address, changes in our graduation requirements for current ninth grade, ninth and tenth grade students and beyond, new provisions for students and military families who will be moving into the school division, new state requirements regarding concussion management and our student athletes, and then state code requirements for public charter schools. So first, we are updating our graduations requirements policy to reflect changes in the state code for ninth and tenth grade students and beyond, as I mentioned earlier. The number of credits for a standard diploma and an advanced studies diploma will remain the same, but the number of verified credits is reduced to five credits for both types of diplomas. And as you will recall, verified credits are those credits for which there is, and you must pass the course as well as an associated test with that class. And so now students will have two, in terms of verified credits, two in English reading and writing, one in math, one in social studies, and one in science to complete the five. And under the updated requirement, students may be eligible for one locally awarded credit for both the advanced and the standard diploma unless the student qualifies for credit accommodations. Under our next revised policy, students whose parents have orders to move into Newport News but have yet to actually relocate here will be allowed to register for courses or to enter our magnet lottery program at the same time as students who currently reside in Newport News. Concussion management, there are changes to our concussion management policy that will require the superintendent to review and update our procedures every two years in terms of how to identify suspected concussions in our student athletes and how to handle those concussions. In addition, the school division will have the option to provide our concussion management guidelines to youth sports teams that use our grounds. Initially or earlier, we were not given the option. We had to do that, but now the state is giving us the option to provide our guidelines to those teams. Our next new policy incorporates all of the state code requirements regarding public charter schools in Virginia, from the charter school application process to the charter school reporting requirements to the school board. And like most school divisions in Virginia, we are using or adopting the state code as our charter school policy. It has all of the requirements, and so most school divisions use the code as their policy, and we are doing the same. And now I'd like to talk to you about the second group of new and revised policies and procedures, and these reflect current school division practices that are in keeping with state and federal laws. And they include a procedure on school board rules of order, our visitors to schools and our school volunteers policies and procedures, and then updates to our technology acceptable use policy and to that procedure and the exhibit. So under school board rules of order, we are revising that procedure to add a new protocol that the board put in place this past summer. So under the new protocol, an item submitted by three or more board members two weeks prior to a school board meeting will be placed automatically on the agenda of the next board meeting. However, if the item is not added for any reason, the board chairman will communicate the status of the agenda item to requesting members. Now, our current policy and procedure on visitors to schools are being revised to ensure that visitation procedures are consistent across the school division and to add guidelines associated with our new Raptor visit management system. So under the procedure, all visitors must present a valid photo ID to main office staff and wear a visitor's identification badge while on school property. The principal also has the authority to deny any person not identifiable as a student, a parent, or a school division employee access to the building or to remove any person whose behavior is disruptive to the educational environment of the school. And like the visitors to school policy, the new procedure on school volunteers also works to put consistent guidelines throughout the school division. The procedure addresses the application and the screening process for anyone volunteering at a school or event or chaperoning a school field trip. It also requires training and orientation for all volunteers prior to the beginning of their service, and it also identifies the types of services that volunteers can provide, such as providing general assistance, tutoring, enrichment activities, mentoring, as well as sponsoring a club. And also, under the new procedure, prospective volunteer athletic coaches will continue to be screened by human resources since those coaches interact with students directly and often on a daily basis. And last, very minor changes are being proposed to our technology acceptable use policy with most of the revisions being made to the procedure. So in the procedure, specific examples of acceptable and unacceptable uses by staff and students were updated. We also clarify the use of email and other electronic communication to highlight email retention requirements and to remind users that there is no expectation of privacy and to reiterate that all written records, including emails and even text messages over school division-issued cell phones, are considered to be public documents and may be released upon request. And lastly, we updated the acceptable use policy fact sheet, which is actually an exhibit to the policy, to include the laws regarding internet safety. The last revision that is being proposed this evening is to our current policy on school board member compensation, which is being, which is being recommended to align our school division policy with the state code. The revision will allow school board members to participate in the school division's group insurance plan. So in terms of next steps, the new and revised policies that I share with you this evening will come before you for approval at your January twenty-first meeting, and once approved, we will post the new and revised policies and procedures on our NMPS website. We'll disseminate them to schools and to our public libraries. So this concludes my report this evening. I'll be happy to answer your questions, along with my expert colleagues who are with me this evening regarding specific details.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Trace, I just want to thank you for the awesome report that you gave us. It was very detailed.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the hard work that you and your team put together to bring us this great information today.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Harris?
The Code of Virginia, twenty-two dot one dash two-five-four, it talks about the active-duty military personnel?
Yes.
Does that cover also the Department of Defense civilians? Because I think that counts, or I think we count the DOD civilian children as well as the active-duty military.
I think it does, but I will check into that forty, most definitely.
And Dr. Best?
I have a question regarding the school volunteers.
Yes.
And my question is, I understand any visitor to the building will present the ID and be processed through the Raptor system?
Yes.
Okay, but if, for example, if someone came in to read to a classroom, they would go to the office and check in through the Raptor system?
Yes.
But let's say they're gonna come maybe three times. Would they have to go through volunteer application and screening, or would that be a different kind of process? Because I know sometimes people come back more than once, but they're not necessarily a volunteer.
Exactly, but if they are going to volunteer fairly regularly for three times, once they're screened, once they're in the system, and they can do the online application process, which puts them in our system to do that.
So if they're coming maybe more than once?
Right.
Is suggested?
Yes, it's suggested that they register as a visitor and be in our, as a volunteer and be in our online system. So that will just expedite every visit after that.
Thank you.
They should still bring ID, I think.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
No, no, yeah. I understand they have to stop in the office. I just wondered if they have to go through training and?
Oh, no, yeah.
Or orientation.
Exactly.
I got one last one. The Raptor system. I know in four uses, you know, they ding you with the gun on your cat card and immediately comes up, you know, whether you've got issues or not.
Yes.
Is there a delay time in the Raptor system at the front desk? So if a person checks in, the clerk, okay, here we go.
Oh, Chris is ready.
Good evening, Mr. Harris. So the Raptor system, it's, when it scans it, it is instantaneous, and it is not doing a criminal background check. It is doing just a screening of the sex offenders database registry for all fifty states. And it immediately returns either, if there's a match, like an exact match, the screen turns red to indicate to the person operating the system that they need to take a closer look. And then there are cases where it will show you a potential match where a portion of the person's information, so we're looking at first name, last name, date of birth. And if you think about, you know, three hundred million people in this country, there is, there are a lot of times, depending on the commonality of your name, that is gonna show up. So that, the screen indicates to the person that they need to then look at. Okay, let's look at the picture. Does the picture look like the person? Because the system is showing you both pictures, but it is instantaneous. There is no delay.
Okay. Ms. Ely?
Has our staff been trained, in the instance that it do turn red, how do you tell a parent that you can't come see their child coming to school properly?
I'm gonna turn that one over to my colleague, Michelle Price.
It's great having a panel of experts.
Well, the, it only turns red if there's a potential match, like Mr. Jenkins said. So we have to look at that a little further, as he indicated, to make sure it's an exact match. If it's an exact match, then the front office staff will ask the person to just wait a minute, and we have trained our school leadership teams to kind of have that conversation with the parent or other family member.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And next, we'll have our Huntington Middle School Academy Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and Dr. Cole will give the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. The purpose of this presentation is to revisit the current academic plan for Huntington Middle School, which was approved by the school board in twenty eighteen. Additionally, as we prepare for the twenty twenty-one school year, which will be the third year of this plan, we will share with the board two alternative plans for next year and beyond, which are being presented based on recent community interest. Dr. Parker and I would like to thank the board for your patience as we took a closer look at this plan and the alternatives that are presented, being presented this evening. Over the past two months, we've solicited input from the community and school division personnel. We have visited schools to assess space availability and the impact on academic and extracurricular activities for each alternative. Tonight, we'll review the current plan as in place, as well as possible alternatives available, then we'll discuss next steps. The current academic plan for Huntington Middle School was presented late in the winter of twenty eighteen and approved that March. This plan was developed following several meetings from parents, alumni, community, faculty, and students. The current plan took in consideration the needs of the students to have a full middle school experience. If you recall, the original plan was to move all students for the twenty eighteen-nineteen school year. However, the parents and community requested the board allow students who are currently attending Huntington to remain together to finish middle school. The primary reason for the school board vote was due to a zoning change that was needed to accommodate the plan. Again, this plan was put into place as it was the best plan for students to have a full middle school experience while the new Huntington was being built. As the board is aware, in twenty eighteen, this zoning change was approved to accommodate the current plan for Huntington Middle School, which disperses students to Hines and Crichton and Middle Schools. The current plan allows the students to have a full academic schedule, offering students all core classes and all elective choices that are available across our division. It also allows for a full athletic and intramural program where students may participate. This plan allows for students to have the full experience of middle school. Since the plan is currently in place, there would be no public hearing necessary for rezoning students. Concerns with the current plan focus on the distance students go from their home and possible transportation issues if a student misses the bus or needs to stay after school. Also with the current plan, there would no longer be a Huntington Middle School where students would be physically enrolled. Alternative option number one would be to begin housing sixth-grade Huntington Middle School students at Heritage High School. This option would then follow each year with adding a grade level to Huntington until all grades six through eight were enrolled at Heritage High School or Huntington Middle School is fully redeveloped. This alternative option would allow students to be enrolled in a school that's closer to their community, and it would allow for Huntington to remain as a more than just a school of record since students would be physically enrolled at the school. However, there are concerns with this plan. The current plan never intended for eleven-year-old students to attend a comprehensive high school. As the students transition to Heritage, there will be space concerns. The school will need a minimum of four portable classrooms added, which would take up needed field space for the high school programs. Additionally, the gym space, hallways, cafeteria, and restrooms would all be shared spaces with the exception of some separation of the middle school from the high school students. The Huntington students would not have the opportunity for a full academic program beyond core classes as we transition, which would result- beyond core classes as we transition, which result, would result in fine arts, foreign language, and courses such as CTE programs being preset for students, which would not allow them the choice in electives. The students also could not field athletic teams with only sixth grade students in attendance, and the board would need to hold a public hearing to accommodate the need for zoning. The second alternative is to create space at Newsom Park Elementary School for Huntington Middle School. As some of you may know, Newsom Park has been an intermediate school in the past, and it has served both elementary and middle age schools, middle school age students. Currently, Newsom Park is a bit under capacity and some space can be made available. However, this alternative would require moving first grade students from Newsom Park to Marshall Early Learning Center. And this would require moving an Achievable Dream Academy and Discovery STEM Academy kindergarten students from Marshall to their home schools to create the needed space for first grade in Marshall Early Learning Center. As was the first alternative, this alternative option would allow students to be enrolled in a school that is closer to their community, and it would allow for Huntington to remain as a more than just a school of record, since students would be physically enrolled. This alternative could also be created in a space that has more instructional and functional space that would accommodate a middle school better than Heritage High School would. And it would be possible to isolate the Huntington students from Newsom Park Elementary students in nearly all instances with some minor adjustments to the building. As was the first alternative, there are concerns with this plan. As the final group of students transitions to Newsom Park, there will be space concerns. The school will need a minimum of four portable classrooms added to accommodate all of the Huntington students. Additional costs for this program would be created by the need to build out office space and an entrance for Huntington Middle School, as well as transforming the auditorium to a gymnasium for Newsom Park and repurposing some spaces into academic classrooms. As was the first alternative, the Huntington students would not have the opportunity for a full academic program beyond core classes, and students could not field athletic teams with only sixth grade students in attendance. This plan would also affect Marshall Early Learning Center, an Achievable Dream Academy, and Discovery STEM Academy, and the board would need to hold a public hearing to accommodate the need for rezoning. Chairman Hunter, based on the assessment of each school, of the, each of the alternative plans and the impact on Huntington Middle School students, families, and the resources of the division, it's the opinion of division leadership that the current academic plan provides the best service to both current and future Huntington Middle School students during the transition to a new Huntington Middle School facility. The current plan is the only one that allows for a full academic offering, as well as athletic and club offerings for Huntington Middle School students. The concerns raised by the community in relation to transportation, overcrowding, and needed supports can be provided at Hines and Crittenon Middle Schools with a few adjustments. Consequently, it's a recommendation of division leadership that the board give serious consideration to the current academic plan prior to considering any alternatives. Should the board agree, there will be no further need for action, as the current plan was approved in 2018. This in no way would alter the plan to work with the city council on providing the necessary funds to build a new Huntington Middle School as currently planned. It will simply allow for the most well-rounded middle school experience for all of our students. If the board remains with the current plan, there are no further steps needed beyond continuing the push for a new Huntington Middle School. If the board wants to consider an alternative plan, there would be a need for a public hearing for rezoning in January, a communication plan would need to be redeveloped and communicated, and the CIP budget would have to be redeveloped to include necessary costs. We understand that while we are transitioning to a new facility, no plan is ideal for all stakeholders. We thank the board and the community for their input during their review of the Huntington Academic Plan, and we hope that the community understands our commitment to provide the best service to students during this transition. At this time, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Simons?
So you mentioned that you can make some adjustments to deal with crowding at Crittenon and Hines. Can you tell me what some of the adjustments and things that you can do at those middle schools?
So we would repurpose some of the space that might be used for specialists or different rooms that are used for planning into classroom space, as well as make sure that we have the proper staffing there to reduce class sizes.
Okay. I mean, I, I am concerned, and I, I think that, um, you know, our city leaders should really understand the consequences of not having Huntington under construction right now. Um, you know, as a school board member, I've been surprised by, um, the outreach I've gotten from parents at, at Hines Middle School about the situation there. So, you know, I, I do think that we need to be looking at everything we can possibly do to reduce class sizes, and even the hallways. And, um, I don't know if there's any creative scheduling you all could do there, but, um, I'm definitely hearing it from my constituents.
Ms. Ely?
Yeah, kind of to pick it back off what Shelley's saying, just visiting the schools, not just hearing from the parents, you're hearing it from the teachers. When you see teachers that are so frustrated and crying out to help, I'm at Farm Fresh and the gym teacher from Crittenon was almost in tears. She says overcrowded here. So I can't go with that philosophy of taking them into Hines and Crittenon. Why we didn't do it this year? If, if, if we could create space for next year, we should have created that space this year where the, the teachers and the kids shouldn't be overcrowded. I'm, I'm all in support of moving these schools, keeping Huntington kids together, um, not so in favor of Heritage, because I don't agree with eighteen-year-olds with eleven-year-olds. That don't make sense to me. I know it make, have an additional cost with sending them to Newsom Park, but like you said, they would have their own ring, they can have their own interest, and they still can operate as a school. And it's, it's sad that we are put in this situation as a board, because in the plan, Huntington's supposed to be going up next year. So it's definitely stoned the board by surprise, it's stoned citizens by surprise, it's stoned teachers, it's put a lot of people in not a good position to make the best decision for kids. So I definitely agree with, um, in my opinion, I feel like Newsom Park is the best option because you're giving kids that true middle school experience. It's not a full middle school experience, and even talking with both principals at Heritage and at Huntington Middle School, they don't agree with it. They, they said, John, this is not the best situation for kids. And I have to listen to their opinion because they are at that school every day. They're dealing with those kids from opening to closing. And with visiting both of those schools, I think giving them their own location in Newsom Park would be the best alternative in keeping all the, the kids of Huntington Middle School together, if possible.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. I have, uh, I have several questions, because I just, here, I just want to make sure that we frame, um, the decision that and the action that the board is about to take, or the action that the board would need to take if an alternative is gonna be pursued. So I'll just start with the, the preliminary question, just to get it out of the way, is, uh, I believe it was $2.8 million was, uh, approved for a design of Huntington Middle School, and I just wanted, because it, uh, want to ask the question explicitly because it was put out earlier. Has the funding that was approved by city council been allocated to the school division for a design of Huntington Middle School?
No.
Okay. So, oh, in over two years, that money has not been allocated to us? It was approved two years ago, it still has not been allocated to Newport News, um, schools for, for a design. Second, second question. So we knew when we adopted this plan, uh, back in 2018, and the plan being a temporary, um, housing of students at Heritage High School, that it was a temporary plan, and that eventually would come to, uh, come to an end. And what the report tonight is illustrating is that, what, the recommendation by the administration now is that that plan has now run its course, and, uh, if, if the board takes no action, then that temporary Huntington Middle School will cease to exist at the end of this calendar year, at the end of the school year, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Is that true? Okay. So what has been presented to us are two alternatives. If the board wants to hold, uh, if the board is going to pursue either alternatives, which is having the students at Newsom, uh, Newsom Park Elementary, or having all the students, the Huntington students at, um, at Heritage High School, then the board must hold a public hearing in January. That's, is that correct? All right. In order for the board to hold such a public hearing, what action does the board need to take at this meeting at this time? Nothing. In, in order to hold the public, uh, hold a public hearing on the alternatives?
Um, I think we're required by, uh, by code, uh, two weeks notice for a public hearing.
Ten days. Ten days.
Ten days. Um, so that would take place in January of notice. Um, it just says to be, uh, the, the will, will of the board, uh, the board to, uh, to hold that public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, but it will be scheduled for the January 21st meeting. It's part of that, uh, regular school board process.
So at, at this point in time, Mr. Chairman, then I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing at our January 21st school board meeting to, um, hear from citizens on alternative one and alternative two for, um, the future of Huntington.
Ms. Simmons?
You heard the motion, and you heard the second on holding a public meeting in January, a public hearing for, uh, the public and at our next meeting?
At our next school board meeting.
The next school board meeting, January 21st, uh, 2020. You heard the first and you heard the second. Uh, is there time for the question?
Okay, just to make sure I understand, so this would be, um, just a hearing so the public can weigh in on these two options.
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. So my understanding, and, and I made this comment when I read the report, uh, yesterday, which was that I believe that now that the administration has completed a full analysis and has analyzed the alternatives that are available, that this is now new information for the public, and the public, uh, should weigh in on how they feel one way or the other about any of the alternatives being the current plan, which is, uh, allow Huntington to close versus going to Newsom Park Elementary School versus going to Heritage High School, and that we need to hear from the public anew, uh, and hear what their opinions are on that before we decide to take, uh, full action. We'll do that January.
That's correct.
So will we have the public forum here, or will we have it in the southeast community, central, northwest?
Well, so my, my motion right now is to have the public hearing here at the board meeting in, in this building right here.
Well, I guess we can discuss that way that I mean to have a bigger impact, we probably need to have in the southeast community. And hopefully, you know, concerned citizens would, would show up.
I suppose, are you amending, making, making an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, not for the date.
But to, but to, to the, uh, location. I second that motion.
Well, you have to remember, if we are gonna do that on that particular date, uh, we don't have any way to record the school board meeting, so.
Okay.
We're gonna have to take, we can have it, it's gonna have to be in the earlier part of the day. So you have to be cognizant of that.
Okay.
You know?
Or could it be a different day?
Or could it be, or we could have it on a different day.
Yeah. Because it just has to be ten days notice.
Okay.
So why don't you?
Then I'll, I'll amend my motion that a public hearing will take place in the month of January, allowing for at least two week, uh, notice.
Are you gonna?
Uh, so that's my amendment to, that's my amendment to my motion, is that I propose that we have a public hearing on alternative one and alternative two for the future of Huntington Middle School sometime in the month of January, allowing for public notice.
Second.
Okay, you heard the motion, you heard the second. Now for the question again. Any more questions?
I have, regarding the report or regarding the motion?
The motion.
The motion.
Just the motion?
Nothing regarding the motion, I have something regarding.
Okay. No other question regarding the motion? There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now, Ms., uh, Dr. Best? You have, you have a question on the report?
Well, as a comment, a question might pop out of you. Okay. Thank you for your, um, report. The first thing that comes to mind for me is when Huntington ceases to physically exist, then Huntington no longer exists. So for a school, I'm just not familiar with a school on paper. I've never heard of a school on paper in all of my years of schooling. So that's a comment regarding that. When we go to... I'm, I'm gonna say this to the board and kind of to the public as we ponder and deliberate the choices regarding the Huntington students, we just have to be very, very serious, deliberate, and not so cavalier. And the reason why I say that is because when Huntington was closed, everybody wasn't concerned about the full academic program for, um, Huntington students. There was no meeting of parents before the school was closed. It was voted on for the school to close. There was a meeting after to tell the parents what's gonna happen to your students. So I, I, I do like the idea of having a public hearing so that the parents will have some benefit. Um, my comments regarding alternative one, I would just ask that if you could add, when you're presenting the pros and cons, and some of the things that we discovered, when we met at Downing Grove, one of the benefits, um, that came out of that meeting was that there was an opportunity for collaboration between, um, the teachers with the middle school and the high school for things such as course and band, and they were actually able to do some activities together. So that was one of the benefits. And one of the other benefits when the students were at, um, Heritage as well, was that, um, the older students felt like they had an opportunity to be role models and to possibly even, they were open to possibly even mentoring the young students. So I just want the report, you know, to reflect everything. Those were brought out, um, at those meetings. When I look at alternative plan two, one of the things that stick out for me is it says that second grade will return to their zone school. I, I say this over and over again, the, the, the brunt of the busing, of, of how our students are zoned in Newport News, the brunt of the busing is taken on by the students in the southeast community. When I see that a second grader has to return to the zone school, which is how it's set up for students in the second grade community. So this, we talk about building relationships, which, which is a very important factor in student success. We talk about students that have been through trauma, and one of the things we know, um, that helps that is, is some stability and people in their lives. When we have a child that will be going to the third school by third grade, it's just not good. For the remaining, for the remainder, uh, for many other students in the remainder of the city, they have an opportunity to attend the same school from grade K through five. So that kind of bothers me.
Can I, can I clarify that real quick? So the movement that would be involved would actually be, right now at Marshall Early Learning Center, they have pre-K and kindergarten.
Correct.
From Newsom Park, and, um, from Discovery STEM and Achievable Dream. So the movement would actually move the kindergartners to Achievable Dream and Discovery STEM, where they'll, where they will stay for their schooling.
Until second grade.
For Discovery STEM.
Second grade. And then they'll have to go to another school for third grade if they do not apply for a magnet school. So it, that just kind of bothers me. I'm not, I'm not blaming you, that was.
No, no, I know.
Before you came. I just want us to be thinking about this.
Right.
Because I don't think we thought about what's gonna happen in three years, in five years. I don't think we were thinking, um, about that. And also, um, just, kind of just a side note, I'm just, because I was thinking as you were making a report, one of the possible options, if we looked at the alternative, if we looked at the alternative for Newsom Park, when we're talking about the extracurricular activities because of the proximity of Newsom Park to an Achievable Dream, especially if, if that plan was approved, if those kids in the sixth and seventh grade, as far as extracurricular activities, possibly, they could, um, join with an Achievable Dream middle school students and have joint teams, so that they're still having opportunity, because the schools are so close in proximity. So it's just something to, um, consider. And then just finally, again, um, I know we all are familiar with the situation that happened with Saunders Elementary School and the students, um, the bus situation, the students leaving out of the back of the bus. Again, we have a, a significant portion of students that ride the bus through no, they didn't wish, their parents don't wish for them. Uh, we do have expectations for behavior, we're not excusing any type of misbehavior, but we have to take those things into consideration, um, as, as well, just take them into consideration.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Simons?
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand what we're discussing. So the Newsom Park option, it would be for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders?
Correct.
And, um, that would be about four hundred students?
So we're projecting next year that a hundred and thirty students would come in, so it'd be, yeah, roughly four hundred, about three ninety to four.
Four middle school, which I think is similar to Booker T. Washington Middle School. They're a small middle school.
Close.
So why couldn't we have Spanish and all the?
So when we're fully there, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we could, by eighth, we'd have a full academic program. The issue would be when we start bringing in just sixth graders to start, you won't have every elective offered.
So we're not talking about just boom, having all three grades there next year?
No.
We're doing it gradually?
Gradually.
Six, then six, seven, then six, seven, eight.
So in order to see a difference in crowding in Crittenon and Hines, it's going to take a while then to get everybody moved there. Okay. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Absolutely.
Well, actually, I could answer that, because those sixth graders would typically be going to Hines and Crittenon next year, whatnot.
Yeah, for one grade level.
For one grade level.
But with the seventh and eighth that was.
I know, but seventh grade would still be there, right. Mr. Harris first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate to the board, you know, like my colleague said here, it's just, let's maintain the focus on the original plan, which was to ensure that we have a school built for that community. I don't want to have to bring up, you know, 1975 ruling on, 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 or 71, excuse me, on neighborhood schooling, but in all actual, we fall directly in that category. I also would like to see, and maybe someone else can get this, when we provide the communication plan, I would like to see what is the psychopathology effects on those kids, not just, you know, I understand busing is rough, but at the end of the day, you know, kids do go through psychological trauma just by moving, and that's a lot of moving for kids. And Department of Defense got it, got it correct years ago when they did not allow soldiers to PCS once their kids got in high school. They stabilized them. And I tell people all the time that if you ever wanted to see society change, it changes in the military first. So they figured this out a long time ago, and I said, we have to stick by our guns. We need to continue to bring in the city on this because at the end of the day, that's what it boils down to. We can't take this fight on alone by ourselves, and I think once we, when we do the communication plan, it needs to be a cause and effect on the tax impact. We need to draw them in to the conversation and get them a piece of this pie, because I've, me personally, you know, and I said this a while back that, I didn't want to say I told somebody so, but the bottom line is, you know, we as a board need to come up with courses of actions that if those courses of actions are not met at a particular time, we execute Plan A or Plan B or Plan C and live with that decision. I mean, we have to do it because the bottom line, we've seen this for the last three years, the ones that's been on the board, we've seen this can get kicked down the road numerous of times, so you know, I don't have to see it, you know, five or six more times to realize what's going to happen. So I really think we need to have a hard conversation, Mr. Chairman, before, well, we need to have a hard conversation on what are we prepared to do, what is our tolerance level, how far does this board want to go to ensure that we get what is due our children? And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back over to you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just a couple more framing questions that I want to put out there and ask. In relation to this particular plan, either alternative that is adopted, is it true that it's a three-year alternative, it's a three-year alternative? So whether we do Newsome Park or Heritage, in another three years, the board would have to re-up another rezoning plan in order to keep a temporary Huntington alive? Is that true?
No, so we would, if the board voted on this plan, it would be until the new Huntington was completed. So we wouldn't have to come back to this. We're trying to make that final plan to keep students from having to move and have to keep re-upping this to move through. So it would be something that we would put in place until the new Huntington is open, and then when the new Huntington's open, everybody would just transition to the new school once it's open.
Okay. And then the cost of the, the cost to the children of the plan of either one of the alternatives is that they lose almost all of their extracurricular activities. If they go to Newsome Park or to Heritage, they're going to lose their extracurricular activities, they can only get an academic schedule, is that true?
As we phase in, so sixth graders, the concern was if you have a school of just sixth graders, there's, they can't really compete against the eighth graders. A lot of growth between sixth and eighth grades, so you can't really field a team. However, we didn't consider, you know, if it is, if it is Newsome Park and Achievable Dream being so close, possibly partnering them for a couple of years as we transition in to have that. But as with any school, the smaller the school is, the harder it is to program everything that we have in Newport News, and that's the concern of the transition back to, you know, the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth to grow that program.
And then both plans require the building, with the build some learning cottages on either campus, so both plans require putting some trailers on to the sites. But with the Newsome plan, two sets of kids have to move because one set of kids has to go to Marshall and a set of kids is going into Newsome, and with the Heritage plan, only, kids only have to move once, is that?
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question was just around, again, I'm going to go back to the money one more time. So no funding has been allocated to Newport News Public Schools for the design of Huntington Middle School more than three years after Huntington Middle School has been closed. No funding from the city has been allocated to Newport News Public Schools for design. And the second question, given that Newport News Public Schools, we put into the first year of our capital improvement budget, we put Huntington Middle School into that budget two years in a row, has any funding for Huntington construction, demolition, site, tear down, anything, anything been allocated from the city in relation to Huntington period?
Appropriated but not allocated.
Okay. So, so again, just to put that out there for the public, no funds have been received to do anything with Huntington, and it's been shut down for more than three years?
Not three, two.
Okay, two, okay, we're going into year three. We're going into year, we're going into year three now. Okay, so I just wanted to make that, make that clear about where our urgency level is and where we need to get our partners' urgency level too. So this is where I get, you know, I'm open, I tell people, I tell my fellow board members, you know, it's nice, I'm open to talking about community centers and rec centers and other kinds of co-ops and things, but you know, my urgency level is for a school, and I'm not sure that my colleagues, my partners really understand the pain that is placed upon the children and our, in our community with not having an urgency level for a school. And we keep talking about YMCA's and Scott Centers and other things like that, that's, you know, that's where I'm not interested, I'm just telling, I'm telling the board that, that's why I, my, my interest level in that is very low because been waiting a couple of years now to try to get a school bill. And so when we, when we get to the school, then we can start talking about nonprofits partnering and putting in, you know, rec centers and stuff like that, okay? So that's my, that's my comment.
Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you, Dr. Poe, for that presentation. Again, you heard, the school board will consider the academic options presented this evening, and during our school board meeting in January 21st, the school will, will hold a, again, will hold a public hearing sometime in January. And we will have to weigh in, you know, we need the public to absolutely weigh in the options. But if you remember, that our goal is the responsibility of our students and what is best for our students. So when we go in to weigh in on these options, think what's best. Think about what you heard, about some of the things that our kids will be losing by going into single schools, and there are some pros and cons at both. If we had a billion dollars, we couldn't build Huntington in a year. That's just construction. You know, you have to tear the building down, you have to get plants, you might have to put piles. I mean, a typical school is going to take, if you built a home, anyone out there would hit their home, it takes six, seven, eight, nine months just to build a home. And so even if we had the plans today, we would be pushing to open that school up in the next two years, and that's with very good weather. So again, those who are in charge, I was going to say this, those who are in charge make the decisions. The school board doesn't have any money to build a school. School board doesn't have any money to build a school. The school board does not have money to build a school. If we did, then we wouldn't have, we couldn't pay teachers to put them in schools. So we just have to think about who's in charge, and that's probably where the focus really needs to be put. But right now, our decision over the next three or four weeks will be what's going to be the best decision for our students, for our students. Dr. Poe, thank you for the report. That being said, we will continue on the agenda. And so next we'll have this 5.03, our pre-Labor Day school start. Hopefully this is more exciting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. As you are aware, for several decades, school divisions in Virginia were required to start after Labor Day unless they obtained a waiver from the state, and in most cases, waivers were granted to areas that sustained high numbers of days of inclement weather. Now, new state law allows school boards to approve a calendar for students with schools being closed from the Friday before Labor Day through the Monday Labor Day holiday. So to begin the process of gathering input from our Newport News community, we conducted a survey along with the other five school divisions on the peninsula about starting our school year before Labor Day. So this evening, I'd like to provide background information in terms of the development of the survey, the survey results, and then our next steps in developing a school calendar for Newport News and for the other school divisions on the peninsula. First, I wanted to share this map with you of the school divisions that are open before and after Labor Day. Those that open after Labor Day are in yellow, which would include the peninsula. So you can see it's a smaller area in terms of the schools that are opening after Labor Now, the calendar survey that was developed earlier this year by area superintendents working with the community relations directors from each of the school divisions on the peninsula. The survey was made available to our Newport News families, our staff members, and community members online from Monday, September 30th through Sunday, October 6th. Now, our intent was not to get just a yes or no answer, but to solicit the factors that we need to consider as we explore starting before Labor Day. Here are some of the frequently asked questions that were provided on the survey and some of the information that we shared with our responders, such as why we are considering starting school before Labor Day, including the recent legislation to allow it. We also talked about why it's important for school divisions on the peninsula to work together in developing their calendar. So we provided examples of some of the services that we share regionally, such as the programs at New Horizons Regional Education Centers. And lastly, we included some of the factors that we also, that we always consider in planning the school calendar each year. And now I'd like to share some of the survey results with you. The survey had eight questions with the opportunity to provide comments. So as you can see in question one, we had the greatest response from our staff members who made up just over half of the 2,651 responders. Our parents were second at 32%. Now, of our students, we had the greatest response from those in high school. Our highest response from parents were those with elementary students at 60%, followed by parents with high school students and then middle school students. Now, in question four, we provided some reasons to consider a pre-Labor Day start to the school year, and we asked responders to select all that applied. So nearly 60% cited the potential to end the school year earlier, 45% selected the potential to end the first semester before the winter break, and the third highest at 40% was the opportunity to have additional makeup days or hours to cover inclement weather. Now, under question five, scheduled family commitments and vacations ranked highest as a factor to be considered in assessing a pre-Labor Day start, and that nearly 65%. While summer work schedules and summer camp or daycare schedules came in second at 45%. When asked to rank the items that were most important for school divisions to consider regarding a pre-Labor Day start, responders answered the most important factor was an earlier end to the school year, followed by more frequent breaks during the school year, and last was an extension of existing breaks throughout the school year. Now, while state law allows an early start of up to 14 days before Labor Day, most responders in our school division preferred starting only one to five days, followed by six to 10 days early. Now, we also provided the opportunity for responders to share their comments, and the comments range from August being a big month for family trips and family reunions, to others saying that more instructional time to prepare for advanced placement and SOL tests before spring would be most beneficial to students. Still, others wanted to make sure that the summer break would remain the same regardless of when the school year began, so they wanted to make sure it remained the same length of time. And I wanted to share with you a chart of some of the considerations that were cited among our area school divisions about the pre-Labor Day start. So for example, we asked the state to clarify whether the 14 days were calendar days or school days, which is the difference between an early start of two weeks versus three weeks. And we recently found out that they are indeed calendar days, so that allows us to start only two weeks earlier. And starting only two weeks earlier also limits our ability to end first, to end the first semester prior to winter break, which was of high interest across the region. So in terms of next steps, the Regional Calendar Committee will work to develop the calendar for next school year to begin after Labor Day as recommended by our peninsula superintendents. And our Newport News calendar will come before you in February as a report item and then in March for action. And next, the Regional Calendar Committee will continue to develop a 2021 or 2022 draft calendar to start 14 days before Labor Day for further reflection and to gather additional input from our school divisions across the peninsula. So this concludes my report this evening, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Gore?
Okay, so I definitely liked the presentation, especially when you brought up more frequent breaks and, you know, and earlier end to the school year. But what would make this plan better than adding more time to the end of the school day as we have done before when a lot of tropical storms have hit this area?
In fact, it would require that in some cases in terms of being able to end the first semester before the winter break. It would probably require an extension of our current school day for additional instructional hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Brooks, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move the agenda then. Item number 5.04, your attendance report, 5.05, your membership report, 5.06, construction report, are part of your package. If no one has, no one has any comments on those, then we'll proceed to 5.07, comments by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and before I begin my prepared remarks, I just want to say that the area superintendents work very closely together in looking at this new legislation that would allow for a pre-Labor Day start. The community, I'd like to thank the community members, in particular our students, our parents, and our staff for completing the survey. Because of your participation, we saw that they're, that moving forward with a pre-Labor Day calendar, proposed calendar for this upcoming year would impact families over, who have already made summer plans, childcare, and those types of things, but, so we felt it would be best to look at the 2021, 22 school year, and that was based on community and constituent input. So thank you for that, and that, Mr. Chairman, that will be the calendar that we will provide for consideration in the future. So I want to take a few moments to publicly thank Ms. Simons, again, Dela Dela Lex Simons, for her support and guidance over the last year and a half. She has truly been a champion for Newport News Public Schools and a supporter of my tenure here, and I really appreciate you and everything that you've done to, to make my entry into Newport News Public Schools successful here. And I thank you for being an advocate for students, and thank you for advocate for specific things like nutrition for students and those type of things. You guys may not realize how much Ms. Simons has bent my ear about healthy meals for students, and I really appreciate that. So, and will continue to support. So I also want to wish our, oh, there's a good nice picture up there with her at the walkie-talkie, and we'll talk about that in a moment. I also want to take a moment to wish Keith Webb, our Executive Director of Plant Services, a happy retirement. This is Keith's last year, last week of service, and after 27 years in Newport News Public Schools, he's hanging up the keys and turning it over, and he's, with the most recent accomplishment, other than being National Plant Manager of the Year, he has been very instrumental in getting our buildings at the Scott Center up and running, and obviously, you know, the challenges that we've had over the years with maintaining healthy and great facilities for our students, Mr. Webb has been instrumental for that. So if you get an opportunity to reach out to Mr. Webb, to acknowledge him and to wish him the best, please do so. This morning, we celebrated the launch of a new partnership with the Newport News Library System that connects students to books and other resources available at their public library. This took a year in the making, and I'll tell you, it took a lot of work because we ran into some legal issues with getting library cards to students. So I want to definitely thank our staff and. for making it happen. And today was the launch, and we took the opportunity to launch it at Marshall Early Learning Center. We had our kids there, and they got their library cards. They went over to the library and had an opportunity to check out some books. It was a phenomenal event, and I just want to thank all of the folks and the Pearl Bailey Library staff for making that possible. This school year, all 1,600 Newport News Public School preschool students will receive their own Student Connect card. Students will be able to check out up to five juvenile books from the public library, access all public library eBooks, and use the computers at the public library. I'd like to also thank Ms. Sonya Antoine, Director of the Public Library, Mary Keeling, our Supervisor of Library Media Services, and Cynthia Watson, the Reading Specialist at Marshall, for their dedicated work to make this project come to fruition. Again, this took over a year in the making, but we, we made sure we pushed through with the initiative. The next phase of the program will be implemented next year. The goal is to ensure that all 27,000 Newport News Public School students in grades K through 12 are signed up for a Student Connect card. So, well done, and it was a great kickoff today Mr. Hunter came and, and helped us kick that off this morning. So thank you for being there. Tomorrow morning, I will partner with Pastor Kevin Swan, and, and he will be hosting at Ivy Baptist Church, a Community Partners Event. We've invited representatives from the non, from many nonprofit organizations, city departments, community groups, and faith-based organizations who serve youth in the Southeast community to discuss how we can engage young people in the Southeastern, Eastern community and better serve them. We hope to inspire some meaningful discussion about sports, recreation, enrichment, camps, and other opportunities for youth outside of school. I'm looking forward to that meeting. If any board members are available, would like to attend, just let me know in the morning. I'll, I'll give you the details of that, that meeting shortly. On November 25th, we held our first Principal for a Day event. Nearly 20,000, 20, oh, 20,000, I wish, 20 legislators, school board members, city council, and business leaders shadowed some of our principals to learn about, more about teaching and learning, and the vast variety of programs and services that are available to students. During our luncheon, our guest principals shared their insight, their insightful reflections about their experiences with our students and staff. I want to thank everyone who served as a principal for a day, including our board members, for making that event a success. I think we had a good time, but we learned a lot also. And our students really benefited from it. So thank you very much. We're looking forward to next year. We're going to continue to offer that program, and we're encouraging more community leaders and, and our council members and everyone else to participate. Dave Jenkins was our, our representative of the city council, and he just had a phenomenal time, and we were very appreciative of his attendance. So on December 4th, we held our second Family Forum of the Year at Denby Community Center. We had a great turnout. Following a presentation about school culture and safety, and us, and it, and that conversation turned into also a discussion about social emotional supports, which were available to our students in Newport News Public Schools. We heard from families and community members who were present, and it was a great discussion. We heard about some things that we're doing right. We heard about some, some areas where we need to take a better look at, and, and some areas of growth. We're also, we were currently following up on some of those discussion points that we had with families that evening. Now, I personally want to thank, and my staff, would personally like to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Harris. We were in their neighborhood, and they, for encouraging parents to attend and providing opening remarks and closing remarks at the event. They know how to get the parents out to a community event. So I really like, I'd like to thank you for that. It was well attended, and we had a good time. After winter break, we will host another family forum, this time in the, we'll look at the Central District. More details forthcoming. I want to formally congratulate the students in the TV Production Two course at the Telecommunications Center. Our board members may not be aware of this, so this is good news, but we, we recently attended the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention. They recognized several video contest winners from around the state. I think at that meeting, we were, may have been overlooked, but our students this year came in. It's honorable mention in that competition. So we need to congratulate them, formally congratulate them for their video. And we will, I didn't want to share it tonight, but we'll share a short segment of it at some point so the board members, so you guys can see it. They did a wonderful job. And as you know, every year, they ask Newport News Public School students to film the State Board Association in Williamsburg. So our kids right up there, they filmed the entire conference and build their, their program for, for that conference for them. They ask for us every year to, to come up and do that. So we have great video production students here, and congratulations to them. As a reminder, all schools and offices will be closed from December 23rd through January 3rd for winter break. I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. I hope you enjoy your winter break and some special family time. But let's not forget those in need. I encourage all of us to, to find a way to give and share in the spirit of the season. Enjoy your time off. I look forward to seeing everyone rested and ready in January. And thank you. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So we're coming again to this time of our, our agenda that we have, audience, comments from the audience. At this time, we do have some cards. So again, I will reiterate as before, as you hear your name come forward, as you begin your comments, the green light comes on. The yellow, yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, the red light and the beep. Please bring your comments to a close. Finish the sentence that you are. As you hear your name, please come forward. And we do have cards. Mr. Bruce Schaefer.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. I want to speak tonight briefly to recommend Peter Mercier as Ms. Simons' successor, because I won't say replacement, because we at New Horizons love Ms. Simons, and we're going to miss her dearly. When I, Peter is an excellent candidate for this. When I think of Peter, the first thing I think of, he's a model citizen. Peter loves his country, and he loves his community, and he shows that in how he conducts himself and through his life of service. I think you all have been briefed and heard him present. So I won't go through details of that, but Peter served 25 years in law enforcement, starting as a Newport News policeman, all the way up to NCIS. So he's done at a national and local level. As an educator, he's taught at college. He's taught at New Horizons. And then he was Director of Adult and Apprenticed Programs at New Horizons. There are several ways I think his experiences can help him function well as a school board member. And in fact, seeing how you all operate has really told me this. First of all, Peter is trained and is used to gathering evidence before he proceeds with a decision. Very objective. He's impartial, and he's very procedural. That's exactly what I saw in all these discussions that you all had tonight. Peter is also able to work collaboratively as part of a team very well, and he absolutely knows how to maintain confidentiality. All of those, I think, are qualities you need as a board member. That's how his law enforcement background helps him. This educational background, I think Peter would understand the needs of the community, and he understands education from the big picture and small picture point of view. Especially when he was Director of the Apprenticeship and Adult Programs, he had to collaborate with city government, with multiple businesses, with state agencies, and with educators and post-secondary institutions. In that, Peter, of all of us as administrators at New Horizons, he was the only one who had to be self-sustaining as adult supervisor. So he had to raise enough money, and sometimes, as the economy changed, that meant he had to make hard decisions and cut some programs, but it also meant he had to be innovative and start some new programs. And I remember being on different committees and working with Peter as he researched, what is the need in the business community for different workforce people? So he's used to being very collaborative, but he innovated and started a lot of new programs, especially an online component. The small picture is Peter is, never forgets about people as individuals and providing opportunities for students and individuals to better themselves. Peter is a person of great integrity, and
Thank you very much.
he connects to everybody with honesty. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next, we have Ms. Priscilla Bell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Priscilla Bell, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of Holly Kidd to fill the Central District interim school board position. I've been a citizen of Newport News since 1965. Graduated Menchville High School in 1977. Both my children are also products of the Newport News Public School Systems, both graduating from Woodside High School. And I have two grandchildren for whom their parents are considering whether or not to enroll them in the Newport News Public School system within the next few years. In addition, I am, I, I did serve as the Commissioner of Revenue for the City of Newport News until I retired two years ago. But as you can see, I have a vested interest in the success of the Newport News Public Schools. I believe that children are our future, and it's our responsibility as adults to provide them with the best that we can offer. Therefore, I'm supporting Holly Kidd to work with each of you to ensure that all of our public schools receive the best of education, funding, and support. Holly Kidd is a conscientious individual that works well on a team such as with, she would with you. Her experience supported by her education is exceptional. I believe her contributions to the school board will enhance the decision-making process. Her motivation in education, in the educational world has always been about doing what is best for the children. She is focused on the benefits of the STEM courses in order to best educate our children for the needs of the future. Holly's education experience will complement the existing diversity of knowledge currently serving on the board. It is always beneficial to have an individual on your team who has participated in the work for which you manage. With Holly's experience as a teacher at Newport News, what better teammate can you have? I respectfully request that you, your vote will be to appoint Holly Kidd for the Central District interim school board position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Fox.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Newport News School Board. My name is Sharon Fox, and I live at 358 Wood Duck Lane in the wonderful city of Newport News. I am up here tonight to express my support for the appointment of Ms. Holly Kidd as the interim member of the school board. And I believe I have some credibility in my support for her. As I raised two daughters who attended several schools in Newport News, they both graduated from Menchville High School. I'm proud to say one went on to UVA, and one went on to CNU. I believe education is the cornerstone of success in our city. And I don't think there's anyone here more qualified than Holly Kidd to provide our students with that path. She is a team player. She is also a mother whose son graduated from Warp High School in Newport News. She taught at Woodside High School. She is now teaching at CNU. She also works for Newport News Department of Engineering. And let me tell you what, to work there, I hope none of them are listening, you do have to be a team player. And she gets along well. She knows how to bring diverse groups together. She puts education at the forefront of everything she does. And I can tell you this, no one will bring more passion, dedication, and just overall willingness to serve than Holly Kidd. Thank you.
Linda Cutchins, is that correct? Is it Linda? She had to leave? Lamont Curtis?
Chairman, Board, Administration. I'm Lamont Curtis, 358 Wood Duck Lane. I'm here to endorse Holly Kidd. Everything that has been said is absolutely true. I just want to make three points on her attributes. Number one, Holly is an engineer. She constructs, builds, designs, plans, maintains, and understands financing and funding of capital improvement programs. Critical issue, as far as you're concerned. She has done $100 million worth of construction in her career. Number two, as a side, she's got an advanced degree in mathematics education, teaches, as has been said, at CNU and at Newport News Schools. But beyond that, with a degree in mathematics, you can imagine the logic that one has to have in order to make decisions. And then thirdly, I would say that philosophically, she is very dedicated and an engaging person. She will engage with the stakeholders, which is what we all need to do when we're in the business community. We need to engage with all of our stakeholders. I do it all the time with the citizens of Newport News, and Holly does the same thing. She will be a tremendous attribute to your board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more cards?
Good evening. My name's Abby Watson. I've been an educator now for 15 years. I currently work in Norfolk City Public Schools. I'm currently serving as a high school system principal for the past five years. It would be ill will if I came to this to support my friend and not speak on her behalf. And so I would like to speak on behalf of Crystal Midlick, candidate for interim school board seat. As a resident of Newport News, I applaud the residents of Newport News for their election of a very diverse board. Sitting, I did start reading bios, and you guys have a very diverse backgrounds, which is amazing. It's not everybody, it's just doctors or lawyers. Everybody brings a very unique personality to the board, which is wonderful. With regards to that, as LeBron James once said, "Devastating Cleveland", and I can speak on it, as that's where I'm from. He took his talents to Miami. And Ms. Simmons, you aren't taking your talents to the House of Delegates. And for the remaining six months of your term, I highly recommend Crystal Midlick. Her passion for education, specifically with regards to literacy, is evident in her work as a classroom teacher, her work with Video E, and her current work as an elementary English specialist. To continue to move Newport News Public Schools to full accreditation, literacy must be at the forefront. Dr. Parker, as part of your first 100-day entry plan last year, you created a strategic supportive quality curriculum. Approving Crystal Midlick to the board would not only support your initiative of quality curriculum and professional needs of teachers. Crystal has the experience serving in both accredited and non-accredited schools, which both have very unique needs. As Newport News Public Schools moves into the very daunting task of approving a budget for the 2020-2021 school year, Crystal can be a huge asset as she will speak to the needs of the teachers, teacher development, and teacher retention as we continue to move Newport News to full accreditation. Newport News to full accreditation. Board asset, when you discuss candidates to fill Ms. Simmons' seat, first you need to look at the needs of the school system and the needs of the board. Select a candidate who can speak to the needs of the teachers to move our students to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none?
Yes.
Thank you again for those who've come to support their particular applicant. And at this time, we're going to move to matters by the school board. And first, we have Mr. Gore. You're up.
Okay. The first point I wanted to bring up is that I'm pretty sure that no one here is more prepared for winter break than I am. Like, I just wanted to put that out there. Also, I had the pleasure of attending the VSBA conference, in which I was able to be with a lot of like-minded individuals. I was able to talk and disperse about the different initiatives that these different student representatives are taking. And I was kind of impressed, and I basically implemented that into my own initiative. They believe that basically middle school students should be prepared for entering high school. Thus, I also thought about having a group of students that would be able to visit middle schools every two or three months in order to show them about what high school is like and then encourage them to be involved in high school. Because for me, it took me until 10th grade to start being involved and getting my voice out there. As a matter of fact, I could have done that in ninth grade and been even more implemented into our school system and done even more things that would prepare not only me for the real world, but other students. Also, I had the pleasure of attending the Strategic Planning Board. It was there where I was able to, you know, feel cool because I was able to teach people older than me stuff that I've already went over yesterday. So, I was sitting there like, yeah, y'all don't know. Y'all don't even know what I know. But I was able to kind of disperse with Dr. Paul, and I had a lot of suggestions, and he was able to be very open-minded. I know I'm not the easiest person to work with. I said, hey, I don't think that this works. And he was like, well, I take that into consideration. And after that, he told me about how it should work and what he's going to do in order to make it work. And I believe that that's what's important about not only everyone on the school board, but everyone that's here right now and everyone that supports the school board system, is that they're not only here to make comments, but they're able to make it work. The last point I wanted to bring up is that Dr. Parker said that he was going to eat in the cafeteria, and I'm going to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Dr. Best?
Good evening. I'll be very, very brief. Just three things. I really enjoyed my principal for a day. I served as principal at Denby High School. I've worked in elementary and middle school before, but I've never worked in a high school. So, it was very eye-opening, thoroughly enjoyed it, and made me respect the things that they do inside of a high school even more. So, I thoroughly enjoyed that. The second thing is Ms. Simons. Again, I would like to congratulate you. Ms. Simons was actually one of the first people on the school board when I was elected that I actually had an opportunity to spend some time with. Very inviting. She's very knowledgeable. She always, when I talked with her, she gave me a perspective sometime I didn't think of. She didn't talk down to you or anything like that. So, I respect and I admire you, and I wish you much success because I know that you are going to go to Richmond and do what is best for children. So, I wish you much success. And the third thing, this is for teachers out there in the classroom, just hold the line. We have three more days. Just hold the line. Boys and girls, students, have some mercy on your teachers. We know you're tired, but we have three more days. Hold the line. Everyone get some rest and enjoy your winter break. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to publicly thank the superintendent for hosting that forum in the North District. I really appreciate that. We actually had parents that came from across the whole city, north, central, and south. And I have a note to give you from one of the parents that's, you know, so I think you know who it is. But anyway, it was a great forum, and they had hard courses for Dr. Parker. The temperature went up a little bit, which is where it's supposed to be when you're trying to get answers. I want to also thank the staff that came out. When I showed up, I went, whoa, man. I mean, you brought the whole team. The whole team. I think we found one gap that was missing, which was a non-Spanish, I mean, we need a translator, yeah, right, translator. But the cool thing about that was, and I want to mention, I can't think of the young lady's name, but I think y'all know who I'm talking about. The father, the mother, and the child came to the forum. So, they immediately realized it was all English, and they did not understand. We, I went down the hallway, asked if anybody speaks Spanish. No one did. And the young lady that works in Human Resources, she said, "Mr. Harris, my friend speaks Spanish." And she got on the telephone, called her friend, and her friend was able to interpret to the family. That conversation probably lasted about 30 minutes on the phone. The family was pleased, excited. So, I just want to give kudos to the staff, the staff members. Also, I had a chance to do the principal for a day. What an experience. I always say, "Principalship is where the rubber meets the road." And under the leadership of Mrs. Barber and her assistant principal, Ms. Brown, I had a wonderful time at the school. The staff is highly motivated. The kids are highly motivated. Everything's going on from selling bracelets when school starts. They shake every kid's hands when they come across. And Ms. Barber said, she told me she don't get sick anymore because I guess she's gotten immune to all the hand shaking of the kids. But I was a little bit stuffy afterwards for the next two days. But I had a wonderful time there. You have a great group of people down at Riverside Elementary School. I'm missing something. Shelley, I'm going to get to you. Yes, I'll get to you now, Ms. Shelley, Ms. Simons. We have, we're undertaking one now, but as a school board member, there's probably no more important duty or task to do than to choose a superintendent, which is one of those marks of a school board if you can get this right. It was no easy task. We've had a lot of tough, hard conversations behind the scene when we was hiring Dr. Parker. But Shelley was always one of the central figures, one of the leaders, one of the ones that said, hey, see it from both sides. We had people that changed their mind because they was able to view things objectively. And the board members that's here, I want to give you guys and gal a round of applause because Shelley, you really were instrumental, right? And what I like about her, she would debate you, and we have debated many times behind closed doors, me and her. But at the end of the day, you know, when you are rational, when you bring forth good ideas, when you have proof to bag it up, I mean, you have no choice but to agree. And I want to thank you for all your hard service, your dedication, your motivation. She always brings that smile, no matter where she's at. And they are going to get someone in Richmond that I don't really think they're prepared for, to be honest with you. I'm just telling you what I know. And she has the stand power, which is a mark of a successful person. Can you endure? Can you lose? Can you get back up and go back at it again? So, we have a great advocate that's going to be in Richmond. Please utilize her because she's going to do great things. I want to wish everybody else a happy holiday on this season. Make sure the crime hasn't went up. A lot of people now has increased of grabbing people from stores and young girls and things of this nature. So, just be cognizant of when you are outside going to stores and shopping at night. Just make sure you have that extra added protection. I've told my daughters, make sure you turn your finder on. Make sure you let, you know, us know where you headed, whatever the case may be. So, just please, please be aware of this shopping season and all the bad things that happen out there. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, it's been a busy, I think, a few months since the last time we talked and got together. A lot has happened. We had, I'm going to echo Mr. Harris's comments and thank the superintendent for not only coming up to the northern area, the Denby Community Center, but also bringing a full compliment of his staff. I think that that's the most administrators we've ever had up north. And it was a very informative forum. I think that a lot of citizens were given the reassurances about our school safety. We've done a lot of things in the last just two years, in the short time that you've joined us, Dr. Parker. You've done a lot of things that have been, that have increased our school safety, our school hardening, which have made our schools safer. And I think that was the theme of the forum, what he communicated, our Raptor system. And we've also highlighted Parent View and the Anti-Bullying App, which is something that has been in the works for, I think, quite a while. So, I want to thank the superintendent for putting all that together and for coming to the families in the north and presenting that. We had our annual VSBA conference this last month. It was a great conference there. And what I want to highlight for the rest of the board is January 13th is the Capitol Conference. And so, I will say that in the time that I've known Ms. Simons, so I'm going to bring Shelley back into it again, Shelley never missed a Capitol Conference. And that was, Shelley was someone on the board who mentored me. That was, followed her lead and always attended the Capitol Conference. And look at where it led her. She never missed a Capitol Conference, never missed an opportunity to talk to her representative or the General Assembly Senator or delegate. And look at where it has led her. So, I encourage the rest of the board to join me, January 13th, come up to Richmond, come to the Capitol Conference. It is our time to talk about school funding, talk more about funding for school safety, talk about school modernization, talk about the various things that have come down, the policies that we've had to talk about tonight that we don't necessarily agree with, is our chance to talk to them. So, take advantage, please take advantage of that. I will say that to Shelley, if there was one person who was probably most responsible for me getting on the board, it would be Shelley. And so, all y'all have her to blame for that. And I think Shelley was responsible for encouraging a few other folks who have joined the board. It was really instrumental in mentoring them and helping them, helping them along their journey. So, Shelley, we're very much going to miss your leadership. I think that was one of the, in any organization, there are a few key critical skills that you need to have. And Shelley is key in the area of recruiting, you know? And so, we are now really missing our recruiting leader in terms of, on the board, in terms of the person who could identify the skill sets and the personality mixtures that really mixed well. I think Shelley has been largely responsible for a lot of the diversity of backgrounds and opinions that you do see on the board here today. So, I want to thank Shelley for that, that level of leadership, and that's probably what I'm going to miss most about you. The last comments I just wanted to make that I've been ruminating about since we had a speaker come and address this last time, there was a pediatrician who talked about concussions and seeing more students, seeing more young people with concussions. And I have been, of course, it's an area that's near and dear to my heart just because I'm very passionate about athletics and football and things and looking at our concussion protocol. I think in reviewing that and looking at data, and I've been looking at it over the last few years, we've gotten a really good handle in terms of the concussion management and protocol for kids who are into athletic competition. And what I heard from the pediatrician, which I'm also seeing echoed in research, which is that kids are not getting hurt necessarily playing organized sports, they're getting hurt doing regular, doing activities, doing cursory activities. And that falls in line with, you know, just a short anecdote, I recall, it was, in seeing this trend, and I'm going to tie this trend to the concept that you may have heard this term "adulting" from the millennial generation, have talked about that a lot. So, the short anecdote is, I think, when I was in college playing football, it was one of the first times that I saw someone get a concussion through what I consider to be their own fault, meaning that the way that the player, the way that he fell was like, hey, man, you don't know how to roll, you know? And we made the joke, hey, stop, drop, and roll. And he got up, made the comment, stop, drop, and roll, what does that mean? And it was the first time I started to realize, oh, so a generational divide has occurred, meaning he was a younger player. Generational divide has occurred. I mean, stop, drop, and roll was something that I was taught, we got taught that drilled into our heads in elementary school. If you're on fire, if you're ever on fire, stop, drop, and roll. And he had never heard that before because when he was in school, it wasn't taught to him. And then I bring that forward to you. You have a lot of adults now talking about adulting. You know, it's good to hear from various constituents. I hear from, you get to hear from the kids because they bring you inspiration. You get to hear from the parents because they bring you the perspiration because they're worried about their children right now. And then when you hear from young adults, it's where you really get to hear about reflection of what they wish they had known. And in talking to young adults, people, I'm talking about people who are, that I work with who are 25 to 30 years old, what they talk about the most is, it's actually interesting in reflection, they say, "I don't know how to cook." And that's, and that's, boys, that's men and women, young men and women, "I don't know how to cook, and I wish I had learned how to cook. And every day, I eat Chipotle and McDonald's because I don't know how to cook." So, when they really like expose what I really wish I had known and what I don't know, I don't know how to cook. And, you know, and that's not to point the finger at us in terms of the school, necessarily us taking our responsibility to teach kids how to cook. But in that process of adulting, there's a lot of reflecting on, there's a lot of skills that kids need these days that they're not necessarily learning at home that we needed to bring in. So, that brings me back to my focus would be on, I do think that we need to increase our level of physical education and health that is taught for kids. I know that with the schedules the way they are, it's difficult to get those things. But PE is where you learn how to do a somersault. So, when you learn how to do a somersault, then you know how to fall and roll over, absorb the blow with your shoulder rather than with your head. And I do see, you do see it a lot with that pediatrician brought to light a lot of the incidents, what we're seeing, kids are using their head to brace their fall as opposed to use your shoulder or your hand to brace your fall. And they just, and I started realizing, if you don't have that instruction because they're not getting enough playtime and recess time, you don't learn that. So, I played outside so much, I fell off my bike so many times that, you know, of course, you learn how to roll. It's a skill that you learn, but kids with their scheduling and activity don't necessarily getting that. So, I want us to really, you know, in the new year, start thinking about how do we get those kinds of skills to kids so that they don't end up in adulting classes when they're 30 years old? All right, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Illey?
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to be principal for a day, and I decided to do Heritage High School. It was definitely an experience just to see the young children be so creative in their goals and even being entrepreneurs. We had Sterling Bailey and Calia Jones at the end of their program, both handed me business cards. It said, "Support their business." So, just seeing the vision of our young students at Heritage and under the direction of Ms. Gerald definitely was a sight to see. And I just want to give a big thanks to Shamika Gerald, the principal, and our whole staff for the amazing job they're doing at Heritage High School. I also want to thank everybody that came out to Heritage High School. We had over 1,000 families come out to get free food. We also sang songs and did a lot of community activities that was really good. That was the feat in Heritage. And I'm also going to miss my good friend Shelley Simons. I must say, when Shelley was campaigning, I felt like I was campaigning. Any, nobody can say anything bad about Shelley because I know how passionate she is about her position on this board and how passionate she is about people and children. And she always make the right decision. So, there's no doubt in my mind, I wanted her to win, but a part of like, no, I want her to stay right here with Simons. But I know she's definitely going to, like everybody on this board, say, she's going to fight 110%, 200% for children's education in Richmond, and she's going to do what's best for everyone. And Shelley, I'm definitely going to miss you. I'm still going to call you every other day. We're going to, you definitely going to be missed. That's it.
Vice Chair, Ms. Lawson.
So, I really enjoyed the VSBA conference, and it was really nice. There's an opportunity where we got to see one of our own move up and do something really exciting. So, congratulations to Douglas Brown. He's the new VSBA Regional Chair. So, he deserves a round of applause. And yes, Mr. Brown, I'll be at the Capitol. Tracy Brooks and your team serving on the Policy Committee really has allowed me to understand the nuts and the bolts going into making policy, interpreting policy, making it into procedure, and hats off to you and your team. Thank you so much, and I'm honored to be part of the committee. My thanks to Dr. Parker and his team for taking thoughtful consideration to best meet the needs of the students for the district in Huntington. And your patience with us as we do our best for these students, we greatly appreciate that. So, we, Dr. Paul, we appreciate your presentation today. Do expect some calls from the board. I know they'll ponder and have a few questions. I know some of them might be on cost implementation, just to give you a heads up. And those are the types of things that we're going to be wanting, you know, definitely letting you know what your homework is. So, thank you so much for laying it out for us. And Douglas, thank you for recapping that process so that everyone understands what we're faced with. I got to be principal for the day at Saunders Elementary. Shannon Pimpkin, she is actually the cutest principal ever with those elementary school students. It is a dual immersion program there. She knows every student by name. Threw her hat on of disciplinarian with a really sweet spirit as we were walking down the halls. It was just a joy to see her in action. So, I felt very honored to be able to be in the building. Shelley?
Thank you for your willingness to leave, I mean, to serve in the House of Delegates. I am appreciative and so thankful for your honesty, your insight, innovative thinking, sensitivity to what is fair, appreciation for diversity, and care for students above all else. So, please go forth and do that for this whole state of Virginia. Yes, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair? Mr. Vice Chair and, um, Ms. Simons.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you all so much for all the kind words. I really, it means a lot to me. And, uh, one thing I noticed is, one of the reasons that y'all like me is because I compromise a lot. I don't always get my way on this board because I'm willing to change my perspective when I hear other people's viewpoints. And so you may see that up in the General Assembly, so don't be surprised if sometimes I seem more conservative or sometimes I seem more liberal or whatever, you know? I'm gonna try to do what's best, you know, for the people of Virginia and, and work with my colleagues. And, um, you know, I, I think, um, to our, you know, future board, one of the most important things is making sure you know the goals of your fellow board members. You know, what is it they want to accomplish? Because if you can help them get what they want done, then when it's your turn and you've got something that you're passionate about, you can all work together and that's the way you build relationships. So I, I have so many friends on this board and now I'm gonna get to Richmond, I have to make hundreds of new friends. Um, you know, so that we can, you know, get things done together. So I, I also hope that you all will continue, um, the summer program, the Spark Program. I think is so important. It's really monumental because of making sure our kids have all these opportunities to explore, um, different things. And not just the students, but the community needs that program. Because the community is out there, they want to do anti-bullying programs and they want to work with kids on, you know, college prep. And we need to give them the space to do that. And that's what the summer program, Spark, is so perfect for, bringing the community into Newport News. And I will continue to fight for the funding so that you have funding for that program. Um, I did really enjoy being principal for the day and I've already talked about it. And, you know, up in Richmond, when I was principal at Dozier Middle School, you know? I saw the need for, um, you know, more technology in middle school. And, and I'll be fighting for that because I think there's an equity piece there. I think every kid in middle school should be able to learn how to program a robot or have a technology class or a computer science class. So, you know, I'm gonna be up there fighting for that and, and also, you know, fighting for resources so that we can pay our teachers more and, um, trying to understand, um, you know, the, the tax code of Virginia and trying to understand the revenue side because I know that we've got to look at that. If we want teachers to get a pay raise, if we want more revenue so that we can teach our children the way we know it needs to be done in the twenty-first century. So, um, and just empowering students. I mean, I, I think that's, um, you know, I've, I've struggled with the, um, you know, college versus career kind of conversation. And I've really landed where kids need to be exposed to so many different things so that they can make their own choice in high school. So that by the time they're a sophomore or junior, they can decide if they're gonna go the career and tech route or if they're gonna go to college. We cannot make that decision for them. That's why it's really important to be teaching algebra and to be doing what we do in middle school and pushing them and pushing the A P courses is so that then they can make their own choice and they can decide. We don't want to be tracking kids and saying, oh, you're gonna go this way. They have to make that decision themselves. And, um, I think you guys are, we've, we've always been united in really wanting to empower children and getting our kids to where they can make their own informed decisions. So I'm really proud of all the work that we've done and thank you so much for all your kind words and, and for supporting each other. And I, I just, you know, my goal is to walk into a room and make sure everybody feels good, you know? That's always been my, my goal, is to make, you know, other people feel good about the work they're doing because there's so much to be proud of in, in Newport News. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Well, I guess it's me and us going home tonight, huh? Well, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. Um, I'm gonna start off in thanking all those who actually turned an application in, uh, to fill that vacancy by delegatelet, um, Ms. Simons. Um, I, I'm excited just for the mere fact that those individuals that I heard today, I mean, do we have a choice? It is great to have choices. And that's Newport News, that's our school. We are always a school of options and do we have options and choices? So I think those are there, still out there, those are going home and looking at this on T V. Um, this board will do some more deliberation, will review the applications, and then we'll, uh, bring a few in or so in for interviews. And, um, we're gonna have your seat with, just filled, we're not gonna take your place. Uh, Ms. Ms. Simon, I know you're gonna go up there and, and do what you do is kick butt. You're gonna make a name for yourself. Uh, that is a testament, uh, to this particular board. That being said, congratulations, um, Mr. Brown for being our, the V S B A Regional Chair for the Tidewater area. Alright. So, so, so Mr. Brown gave up the chair seat so he can pursue higher things. As, as he told me last year, you know, when he was going to be the chair, he says, Mr. Mr. Hunter, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I want to do something different. I want to do something more. And so he went out, he set his mind to it, and now he accomplished it. There was no challenger, he ran unopposed, uh, not like some other seats up there. But you ran unopposed and I know you're gonna do Newport News, um, wonders. So thank you for that. I thank you again, I was a principal for a day at, what was I, I was at Palmer Elementary. Yeah, well, with, um, um, Principal Lynch. And let me tell you, if you want to see girl power, the whole Student Association is women. And the little powerhouse is the president. And let me tell you, she lined us up and took, when we took a picture, she told me exactly where each one of us was gonna line up and who's gonna stand where to take the picture. Well, where are you gonna be in the future? I'm gonna be a doctor, but first, I'm gonna go and help out a nonprofit and then become a doctor. So again, a teacher for a day, or the principal for a day is really experience. I can't wait till next year. I'm quite sure we're gonna have even more folks out there. Again, I was there today to see the, um, I'm not sure where the kids were. Did he give them some special drinks this morning? Because the kids were so well behaved at Marshall of Childhood. I mean, you wouldn't know that there were hundreds of kids in there sitting on the floor, most of them dressed in red. But what a joy for them to get their library cards at that young age. I heard today, I heard this evening about literacy, about the key to success, you know? I mean, that's the key. If you can read, you know, you can go anywhere you want, you can be whatever you want to be. And wow, we're doing that at the kindergarten, preschool level. What a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful opportunity, uh, for our kids. Great things are happening in our school system. And other than that, I was just wanna say, um, this board is passionate, if you didn't hear it today. And we're passionate, I mean, we want a Huntington, a Huntington will be built. It will be. No, no matter what decision this board makes with the community, you must believe that a Huntington will be built. I know it seems like a long time, but it really hasn't been. We've closed school less than two years. But we, the city didn't even have any money in the budget. They put money in the budget, not all that we want, but it's there. We are moving, things move slowly with the help of the Huntington alum and the parents and the focus of this particular board. Because I'm gonna tell you, this is a hard seat to sit in. I, I could be on the phone for wee hours of the morning. Uh, but I'll tell you, as I sit in this seat, when that school closed, I said, as long as I sit on this board, that a Huntington Middle School will be built. One will be built. If not, then I may run for an office down there at the city to make sure it is built. That's not a political.
It's on the record.
I say, I may. Uh, that being said, I wish everyone out there in T V land and those are here, uh, wonderful and happy holiday season. Eat lots of food, um, shake someone's hand. You know, there are people out there just not as fortunate as we may be. No matter how little bit of money you have or how much you have, shake someone's hand, say hello, say happy holidays. Some things we can't say in the school, but say hello, give someone a hug. This is what the holiday season is all about. It's about a joyous time. It's not about what we get, it's about what we give. Okay? About what we give. So give hugs, give hellos, give a smile, and just give a thank you for the person that's working in the store or whatever the case may be. When you're tipping, tip an extra dollar because those people are working. I mean, do the little things, I tell you, it will make a difference in someone's life. It is the holiday season, let's go out, enjoy ourselves, be safe and be merry, and I'll see you in twenty twenty. If there's no other business to be done, I want to thank, I'm sorry. Okay. I just, so look at these beautiful gifts that we've got. I think if we want to thank.
Oh, thank all.
We want to thank the superintendent and the staff for these wonderful, uh, tokens of appreciation for Christmas that says, we give, um, this is, let's, let's pay it forward, okay? Or let's give it.
I'm gonna eat all this chocolate.
I will adjourn this meeting, um, before nine o'clock.
You're right.